All right, let's call to order, Brainerd City Council. It's Monday, April 21st, 2025, 7:30 PM in council chambers. Tony, please call the roll.
Bevins?
Yes.
Chesok?
Yes.
Johnson?
Here.
Stunek?
Here.
Jaeger?
Yep.
Erickson?
Yep.
Oday?
Here.
Adele?
Here.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands under God indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Head or off. Okay. All right, next we have approval of the agenda.
Move to approve?
Second. Motion by Chesok, second by Bevins. Any more discussion? Seeing none, go to a vote. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign. That motion passes. Next, we have a consent calendar. This is a notice to the public that all matters listed are considered routine by the council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the time the council votes on the motion to be adopted by a roll call. Looking for a motion?
So move.
Second. Motion by Stunek, second by Bevins. Any discussion?
Mr. President, we would ask that you add an additional item to the consent calendar. It would be an approval of a temporary on-sale liquor license submitted by the Brainerd Eagles for a event at Memorial Park on the 26th of April.
Okay.
Move to add that to the consent and for approval?
Second.
Motion by Chesok, second by Jaeger. Is that a motion on top of a motion, but, okay. Do we have that in a document somewhere?
We do, but we just received it today.
Is this the same Eagles that submits for the Fourth of July on the Third of July?
Yes.
Is that same Eagles club?
It's for the early bird tournament for Parks and Rec.
Okay.
I'll take care of that.
We have the application somewhere, though. Okay. You could add that to the packet later. All right, please call the roll.
Bevins?
Yes.
Chesok?
Yeah.
Johnson?
Yes.
Stunek?
Yes.
Jaeger?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Oday?
Yes. All right, and we're off. Next, we have the public forum. This is time allocated for citizens to bring matters not on the agenda to the council. Time limits may be imposed. Looks like we have quite a few people here tonight, so I'm going to ask that you stay under three minutes. But if there's anybody here that wants to address the council at this time for anything that's not on the agenda, please come forward now.
Hello, Mike Higgins, 1801 Mel Avenue. Is it okay if I hand out some pictures?
Sure.
Make sure that green light's on, too, Mike. So, these are some pictures of some retention ponds. I got a retention pond inspection a few weeks ago. I pulled on my property at the old Potlatch and a woman was walking around without my knowledge or without talking to me. I asked her and she said that our city engineer, Jesse Dean, had got a complaint about my retention ponds, about somebody dumping toxic waste or something in it. And very nice lady. We talked for 15 minutes. She asked me what I did for my retention ponds. I walked her and talked her through the maintenance that I did. And it just really irked me that Jesse would not have called me and when he got a complaint like that and come out and seen me or come out and talked to me. So I also bought a house recently on Lakeview Lane around the road. And this first picture is a picture of one of your guys' retention ponds. And it's full of pine trees and cattails and poples and trash and crap. And the next page is my retention ponds on my BIC property that I maintain. I mow them. I pick up the trash once a year. And I'm just really frustrated that I always get held accountable to a standard that the city, our engineer and our planning, planners and our staff can't maintain our city property up, but they hold me accountable to holding something up. And it's really getting frustrating. I get these calls two, three times a year. I'm not mowing my lawn. I'm not doing something. Somebody comes out, I get a fine in the mail, and the people doing this don't even know what our codes are. They don't even know what our ordinances are. And it's frustrating. I'm trying to develop. I'm trying to bring tenants to Brainerd and I'm trying to invest money in this town. I've been here 11 years now. And some of the stuff's just exhausting. Page three is a picture of my pine trees that Mr. Jaeger called me out for in the last meeting that I was at when I was trying to get my CUP to be able to sell trailers and stuff there. As you can see, these pine trees are trimmed up. They're maintained. I've been doing that for 11 years. If you don't maintain them, they grow into the fence. They, you can't mow around them. And then I get a ticket for not mowing. So, yeah, I prune my trees. I maintain my trees, Kevin. I take care of them. I've done it for 11 years. When I got here, those trees were on the ground. None of it was mowed. None of it was taken care of. I spent two months out there going around that property, cleaning it up because Potlatch and Wausau had not maintained it for years. And it's really frustrating that you couldn't call me on the phone and ask me about the trees before you, we got, and that thing went through planting and zoning perfect. And then you gotta call me out and tell me I can't prune my trees? Page number four is on the side road and it's a bunch of trees that aren't trimmed and aren't maintained. And look at them. They're dying because that's what pine trees in Minnesota do if you don't take care of them on a road front. They die. So I don't appreciate you calling me out in the meeting like that and changing my CUP because now technically I can't prune my trees. And that ain't, that ain't right. So now I can't prune my trees. I can't mow around them and I'm going to get a ticket for not mowing. Technically, I'm going to keep mowing them and I'm going to prune my trees and I'm going to take care of my property. If you want to take me to jail or write me a ticket or do whatever you want to do, go ahead. I don't care. I'm going to do it. And the last page is a picture of the house across the road from the firehouse. You guys are worried about me maintaining my properties and I drive by this every day. Look at the picture. And you want to call me out and gripe about me maintaining my properties? I've been in this community for 11 years. When I first got here, Mary Cope sat right up here the day I said I bought the paper mill and she stood back and she said, "What are you going to want from me? What are you going to want from us as a city?" And I said, "I really don't know what I want. I don't, I just bought this. I've been in Brainerd for 28 days. I'm not sure what I'm going to want to do with it, but I'm going to want support. I'm going to want help along the way." And I haven't got that. All I get is this nitpicking crap. I mean, Nick, when we went to the, to that meeting the other day, the fact that you haven't even looked at the comprehensive plan that I spent two years on. I went to meetings every month for two years, listening to this community, learning what they want so that I can invest. And our city, you're my seventh city administrator in 11 years. And that's not your fault, but, I mean, we got to look at what the community wants. And I'm, I just, I, I mean, I got, I'm up here today for another CUP and maybe you guys all vote against the church coming to the North Rim Civic Center. I don't care, but I'm sick of carrying this around. Thank you for your time. I'm glad that I got to vent.
Thank you, Mr. Higgins. Anyone else? Name an address, please.
Yes, Sarah Nelson Katzenberger, 978 Holton Avenue. Just coming to address you guys, just following the discussion about the Bridge on Seventh, Bridges of Hope's warming shelter, come with a little bit of history. I served on the board for Bridges of Hope from 2018 to 2024. And tonight, I'm here not just as a former board member, but as a neighbor, as a mom and as someone who really loves this community deeply. Just to go back to where things started, in the spring of 2021, I sat in a room filled with community leaders from nonprofits, faith organizations, law enforcement, city and county officials, all asking the same heavy question. What can we do about homelessness in the Brainerd Lakes area? It's a question that's been asked for decades without a lot of progress in the doing. And we all know the issue's complex. We knew it wasn't unique to Brainerd, but that day, the conversation shifted from what if to what now. There were some ideas discussed like hotel vouchers, long-term housing, permanent shelter, but the one thing that stuck was a simple overnight, low-barrier seasonal shelter, a pilot program to see if it could even work because we weren't sure at that time. When the question was asked, who will lead this effort, there was a lot of silence in the room. The question hung in the air for an uncomfortable amount of time as various agency representatives looked at each other, wondering who would step up. It was a big undertaking and it came with a ton of risk. Someone suggested a brief recess and a palpable sigh of relief was felt in the room. And then someone at our Bridges of Hope table quietly said, "Why can't we do it?" Those five words changed everything. That's how Bridge of, Bridge on Seventh began, born from hope, from courage, from a refusal to look away. Over the past three years, it's provided warmth on the coldest nights, a place to rest for exhausted bodies and dignity for people who've often felt forgotten. It has saved lives and it's restored hope. These are not faceless strangers from other communities. These are our neighbors, our veterans, sons and daughters, our community. They deserve better than dismissal. They deserve compassion. Tonight, I'm just asking you to please reconsider your stance. Partner with us. Come back to the table. Let Bridges of Hope continue doing what it does best, stand in the gap for people in crisis and remind them that they're not alone. I think how we treat the most vulnerable in our community speaks louder than our policies. It defines who we are. Thanks for listening.
Thank you very much.
My name's Eric Holst, 21471 Paradise Drive. I too served with Sarah for the time of 2018 to 2024. I too was on that, in that meeting. I too slept outside to try and raise money and support for this place. I didn't want the shelter to be open year-round. I was very adamant. I told Jana as the board chair, we should not have this place open multiple years. However, the city forced our hand last year. We've seen people die because they have no place to live and they're in tents and they need care. Does the police have to respond to the shelter? Yes. If you've been to the shelter with the guests, no one really wants to be there. If you have a hard time sleeping at night and going to work the next day, you don't want to be in this place. These people have no other choice. These people are looking for a safe place to sleep so that they are not accosted in the middle of the night, they're not arrested for sleeping in a place that they're not supposed to be. We are not asking for help. We're asking for permission. This thing has been funded by private individuals, community members, huge support by the county. I heard last time, we don't want to be this place that attracts, in essence, the riffraff. So who do we want to be as a community? Do we want to be a place that only is welcoming to people that have a certain income threshold? Do we want to check IDs and say, "Are you worthy of being in the Brainerd Lakes area?" Or do we want to be people that are known for our hearts, our love and our care? Again, this is not some fancy place to live. This is simply a place where people can come, be seen as the human beings they are, be treated with dignity, love and respect. That's what we're asking for. We're asking for the simple permission to operate a place that these people can sleep and be safe at night. Because the last thing a person wants is to be sleeping in a tent where they're not sure where they're going to go, the bathroom, and they're not sure if the footsteps outside their tent door are there to hurt them, steal from them or send them to jail because they don't have a place to sleep.
Amanda Quisberg, 1168 Shadow Trail Drive. As local business owners, active members of our church and parents raising our family in this community, we want to express our deep appreciation for the thoughtful and compassionate way the Bridge on Seventh has been operated. We volunteered at the shelter and seen firsthand the care and dignity extended to each guest. Our children understand the mission, too. When the shelter was first fundraising, our son Levi, age eight, learned about the project and set on a personal mission. He also slept outside with me, raising over $2,000 for the bridge. Even at a young age, he understood that everyone deserves a safe place to stay. What we've seen at the shelter is inspiring. The staff are dedicated and clearly care about every guest who walks through the door. Volunteers are made to feel part of the team. Local churches continue to step up with snacks, supplies, encouragement and financial support. We recently learned that 70% of all shelter guests have stayed 14 nights or fewer since the shelter opened. That tells us this isn't a place where people linger. It's a short-term response that helps people stabilize and take their next steps. That's why it was so disappointing to learn that the council voted to deny summer operations and reduce the permit to one year. Closing the shelter during the warmer months won't make the need go away. It just pushes people into more difficult and dangerous situations. Bridges of Hope has shown they're listening and willing to adapt, they're tracking data better and adjusting policies and strengthening community partnerships. We hope the council will return to this table and work with Bridges of Hope to find a lasting year-round solution. Our community and our kids are watching and believe, and we believe we can do better. Thank you.
Brandon Nguyen, 303 North Ninth Street, Brainerd, Minnesota. First, I want to thank you guys very much for having something like this open. And I would also like to talk about the Bridge on Seventh as well. I do think it should be open. I know a lot of you guys, for instance, Kelly, he worked on my car, Chesok, I've been to Mickey several times. You guys have a strong sense of community. And I know when budget cuts come, somebody's always going to be angry and I understand. But I really think cutting the funding for Bridge on Seventh is, is a bad idea. These are our communities. These aren't people across the pond. These aren't people in different city. These are people right here and we need to take care of them at their weakest. I know, I went before the meeting and I talked to a couple homeless people at the Bridge on Seventh and a staff member. They said that the people in Baxter, the open arms, they come, they help them get insurance, they have a spot where they can be. I think it is necessary for it to be year-round, for it to stay open, you know, indefinitely. And I really wish you guys to reconsider this. It's close to the soup kitchen. It's close to the YMCA. They provide clothes. They provide food. They can get, they can get clean clothes. They can take a shower at the YMCA so they can get a job interview. And as far as the money aspect is concerned, I really do think if we can really focus on helping getting these people back on our feet, on their feet, we can get them working jobs, we can get them paying taxes and then they'll be paying money back into the system. And I really think it's a good thing. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Anybody else here? Okay.
Sarah Marshall, 133 Carolaine. I'm here to raise my voice of support for the bridge and to address some of the concerns and questions regarding questions raised in the operation as both a citizen here, a board member of Bridges of Hope and as a pastor of two churches here in our local community. I'd like to some clearance on why exactly this decision was made. The bridge exists because our community needs a safe and supportive place for people who are experiencing homelessness. It's not just the building. It's a commitment to compassion, to dignity and even to public responsibility. Without it, many of the most vulnerable in our area would be without shelter during those evening hours. That said, I understand and share the community's interest in both transparency and accountability. A fair question was raised. What standard will the bridge be held to when its permitting decision? It seems clearly reasonable that as citizens and partners, we know the criteria that was used to evaluate this permit, both now and in the future. Clear expectations allow for trust and collaboration between the city and between Bridges and our greater community. I urge you to make those standards both public and measurable. Another point I'd like to address is the misconception that's been circulating, some idea that we've been bringing folks in from St. Cloud. It's not facts. The fact is that only four individuals from St. Cloud have ever stayed at the bridge. The bridge serves as a local solution to a local need. Wouldn't it be amazing if every town and city in Minnesota had its own shelter? Absolutely. Unfortunately, we can't control it. Other towns do. That's not how it works. What we can do now is work towards having a year-round shelter here in our place. There's the second question of the police calls. One of the biggest concerns I've heard time and time again is the number of police calls that have happened to the bridge. According to the most recent Star Tribune article, Brainerd police respond to 18,000 calls in a year. In the context of 119 calls over the shelter, seems like a small fraction at only four or five a month at most. When we dig into those 119 calls, 36 were for EMS, emergencies that would have happened no matter where these people were located. Six were related to suicide attempts or ideation, serious situations that require support, not stigmatation, and these people hopefully would have gotten help wherever they were at. 15 were for referrals to the shelter after 11:00 PM. In other words, people were being helped. Even without adjusting to the nature of those calls, the number is significantly lower than the average number of calls made to three other public areas in Brainerd where unhoused individuals gather during the summer. From the numbers that we pulled, those averaged about 13 calls per month over the last two summers, more than triple the numbers of calls that are connected to the bridge. If we're truly talking about public safety and the impact on service, the data shows the Bridge on Seventh is doing exactly what it should be doing, reducing strains on our systems, not increasing it, and providing people with a safe place to rest at night, a place to connect to resources and a place to sleep without fear. In closing, I urge you, council, to continue to support the bridge, to come back to the table, engage in the conversation and let us know what changes can be made to our proposal and how we can actually work together and make this happen. The shelter is a vital resource and it's working. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Shannon Mills, 8449 Travis Trail in Brainerd. Tonight, I come before you not representing any specific organization, but the titles I will use today are, "I'm a Christ follower," "I'm a concerned citizen," "as someone that has felt called to be a voice for the homeless population" and "someone that's 100% pro-life." As someone that's pro-life, I'm concerned about the lack of shelter and what happened a couple weeks ago and the last five-plus years of votes that have been made here to put barriers in the ways that, of people that need shelter. So a few reasons I come before you today are, I would encourage each of you to go back and listen to the last council meeting and councilmen Jaegers talk about the shelter last time. I wanted to clap because I felt like he did a very good job of capturing the complexity of this issue, but also why the year-round shelter is important. I quote him by saying, this stuck out to me, I quote him by saying, "I refuse to exclusively measure the virtues of the shortcomings of a human being simply by their station in life, even if it's their own doing." The second reason I come before you is last meeting, it was brought up a couple times about the concern for the year-round shelter and the strain it might put on our current resources in our area and exhausting the resources that we have. And someone, in my job, I work with a homeless population every day and I can tell you at my job, having the shelter closed puts a strain on my organization. And so I'm very thankful when the shelter is open because it, it helps alleviate some of that strain on our organization. I can tell you the last three years, I could tell you by behaviors of when the shelter closes because tensions rise and rightfully so. People are concerned about where they're sleeping. They're not sleeping well. And I know last year, when the shelter closed, I asked a police officer and I regretfully did not get his name, but I asked him, "Now, is this just at my organization or is this everywhere around town that you're seeing these calls with the shelter closed?" And he had said, "It's, it's everywhere around town and not just our organization because tensions are high." And I'm very thankful for the shelter being open because we have resources to, to send people to and so it would be very helpful if it was open year-round. Another reason I'm here is I heard last meeting, it brought up that it was called a warming shelter and that's how it was presented. And I was part of the, the group five, four or five years ago with all the organizations that came together, the county churches, the previous police chief, lots of different organizations coming together to get this warming shelter open. And so what changed? It changed that the ordinance happened in August and now there could be a fine or jail time for those that are caught sleeping outside. And so it's very essential that it's open year-round now. I'll quote mayor, the mayor from last meeting. He said, "As council members, we are representatives of citizens of Brainerd, here to make decisions the best, representatives of the citizens of Brainerd, here to make decisions best for the city of Brainerd. And we live in a very unique community that has people that have two houses. There's people that have one houses and there's unfortunately people that have zero houses. And so as council members, I ask you to take into consideration those that have zero houses." And also Kevin Jaeger also said, "We want to support people that support people." And I get a front row seat every day of seeing the amazing people in this community that support people and love people well. And I ask you as council members to allow the Bridge on Seventh to support people and other organizations in our community that are helping this population because they are doing an amazing job. So thank you for your time.
My name is Kristy Ramler, 27094 Middle Cullum Road. Good evening, council members. I am a local business owner, a wife and a mother of two that attend Brainerd Public Schools. We bleed warrior blue in our house. I also serve on the Board of Directors of Bridges of Hope. I'm here to ask you to come back to the table, reopen the discussion about the Bridge on Seventh. We have data that we want to share with you because we believe there's been misinformation communicated. We want an opportunity to display the fallout from your decisions made on April 7th and what that means for our future as an organization and the future of those we serve. I also believe that our community has communicated a very strong message of support since your decision. And this represents an opportunity for you to listen and to, and for Brainerd to be a leader in our county, in our region and in our state. As I mentioned, we have facts to share and you've heard some of them tonight and you're going to hear more. I'm not going to go into length, but I do have one stat that I'd like to share. Out of the 170 individuals who have stayed at the shelter this year, 50 have already transitioned into stable housing. That's nearly one in three, proof that the shelter is a launchpad for change. And that's not even the number one goal of our shelter. We simply want to start providing a, start by providing a safe night's sleep. But this stat shows that when we all work together, the organizations like Shannon's, you guys, Bridges of Hope, that we can offer, when it starts with one barrier-free entry point that can connect people to support, we can change the community for the better. I understand the challenges and all the things you have to consider. I truly do. But turning away from the issue will not solve this. Please, let's work together to provide compassion and a long-term impact. Brainerd is better than this. Let's show that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wants to address the council?
Good evening, council members. A lot of good data has been raised tonight, so I will try not to repeat.
Sorry, I got to stop you.
Oh, I'm so sorry, Jana Shogren. I'm representing Bridges of Hope at 2011 South Sixth Street. So you have heard a few things tonight that I think are, do bear repeating, that when we hear about people coming from outside the city, the data just does not point to that. Might there be people who have come to Brainerd from outside the city? Absolutely. But I can tell you, they're not coming for the shelter. As you heard tonight, four people from St. Cloud have ever stayed at our shelter. So this notion that multiple people, lots of people from St. Cloud are coming, they're not coming to stay at the bridge. I'm not sure what else is going on, but that's just not what's happening. In terms of bringing people in from outside of the community, Brainerd's public safety goal specifically states, "Brainerd will protect and provide for the safety of all residents and visitors, making efficient use of existing facilities like ours to ensure access to emergency services for all residents and visitors." It's right in your guys' public safety goal. Sometimes visitors to our area are tourists and sometimes they're unhoused and that's just the reality. When I look around at what happens in this community, there are a number of large-scale events hosted in the area every year that attract visitors, right? And those events can result in interactions with the police department and visits to the emergency rooms. Are we holding those events to the same standards that we're holding our shelter to? You've heard tonight that people don't stay with us for long. This notion that we're maybe making it easy to be homeless or that people just come and stay at the bridge and they're never leaving, it's just not the case. 70% of people have stayed with us for two weeks or less. 70% of people have stayed with us for two weeks or less. 3.25 years we've been open, you guys, 70% of people stay with us for two weeks or less. They are transitioning, as Kristi said, 50 people this season alone that have been helped to find housing. If they didn't have the bridge as a landing point, as a point of entry, how would those folks have found housing? I'm not sure they would have. I would just ask you to also consider that this was not some sneaky plan on behalf of Bridges of Hope. You know, the notion, again, that we opened as a warming shelter, and now we're coming around and trying to stay open all year, that's just not what's going on here. This is specifically in response to Ordinance 1571, making it illegal to camp on public land. So when our guests leave the shelter on May 1st next week, where are they supposed to go? There's nowhere legal for them to be. So when we talk about the shelter staying open all year round, we want to bring it back to the facts. Most of the people we serve are from here, most of them stay just a short time, and many of them leave in a better place than they found us, and that's a good thing. I also want to address the fact of taking our permit from three years to one year. When we had our three-year permit, the police chief at any time had the ability to bring our permit back before you if there's any trouble. We are a business, just like anybody else, so we're a nonprofit, sure, but we have operations that we still have to account for. We have to negotiate a lease, we have staff to pay, we have staff to train, and we have funds to raise. I don't know any business that would choose to operate year to year or that would be able to operate that way. It really just cuts off our ability to plan for the long term, and that's not the best way to run our shelter. So I just ask you to please, there is a path forward. You do have the ability to bring this issue back before you as a body and make a different decision. Work with us, let us know what you need from us, but really, we need the bridge open year-round, and we need a three-year permit at a time. Thank you.
Hello. Matt Carlgaard, representing Bridges of Hope, 2011 South Sixth Street. Thank you for having me. I'll be quick. Last fall, we've been talking about this, you passed City Ordinance 1571, effectively criminalizing camping on city property. This ordinance states that the city cannot prosecute for violations unless resources, including shelter, have been offered. In your April 7th council meeting, you rejected the request for a conditional years permit to trial operation during summer months of 2025. Since the Bridge on Seventh is the only overnight shelter in town, these two actions are conflicting. The camping ban will be unenforceable because there's no services to refer people to. This unresolved conflict and a lack of safe shelter creates unnecessary suffering for people who find themselves without a home, and it will create unnecessary burden, as you've heard, on law enforcement and other city agencies. This has a cost to the city. Providing shelter and services as called for by the camping ban also has a cost. But Bridges of Hope, as you know, is not funded by the city. We are not asking for money, we are only asking for permission to operate, as we have been, helping people and in doing so, providing a valuable service to the city. So I'm just going to reiterate, we're asking you to come back to the table, talk to us, work together. We'd love nothing more than to just continue providing these essential services as we have been, so I hope you'll consider that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Chazak.
Could you ask the speaker to give his home address?
Oh.
Yeah.
He's asking for your home address.
Sure. 16236 Birchwood Lane, Brainerd.
I'm Murray Francis. I live at 1603 South Sixth Street, and I just want to tell you a story. Back in the 1980s, my brother suffered from mental health issues. He was a veteran, and the cause of his mental health issues was related to his service for this country. In the 80s, there was no place, no place, for a person who lost homes or who lost their ability to function as a human person, except the state hospital. Now the state hospital is gone. Numerous occasions, the police picked up my brother after he had been beaten and stripped and robbed by kids or whomever in the Brainerd area. And he was then taken to the state hospital. They would call me, and I would look and try to find him another place to live. While he had his demons to fight, we struggled. Eventually, my brother disappeared, and we searched, and we had the Brainerd police look for him. Eventually, he was found in Ohio. Now, a man who has not the ability to any longer function on that plane to get from Brainerd to Ohio is suspicious to me. However, that's not why I'm here. I'm here to support these Bridges of Hope. They are just down the street from me. I live not two blocks away, and there has never been any issue that has disturbed me in any way whatsoever. But that place provides an emergency stop place for the police if they have to find somebody, if they have to pick somebody up and get them to someplace where they can get help, they have it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here that would like to come up and speak? Is there anyone else online that would like to speak? If so, please press star three. Anything, Sean?
Save Eric.
Okay. If there's no one else here that's wanting to come up and speak, and there's no one online, I'll ask one more time. We will close the public hearing. It is 8:07. Thank you all for coming and supporting and speaking. I know it's not easy for everybody to do that, and we do take it to heart, and we do think about these things, we talk with our staff. It's not on the agenda tonight, obviously, we know that. That's why we can speak about it at public forum, but going forward, we're keeping an eye on things, and we'll stay in contact with all of you. We're here all the time, and we don't have to always agree on everything. There's a lot of things we agree on, probably way more things we agree on than what we don't. But we do things as we go based on the information that we have, and we're moving forward right now, as is. Those things can change from time to time. So again, thank you guys for coming in and speaking. Next, we have number seven. This is Council Committee Reports. First, oh, yeah, if you guys, most of you are planning on leaving, go ahead, I'll give All right, 7A, we have Safety and Public Works Committee Chairman, Tad Erickson.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. We have nine items on our agenda, the first of which is direction on active code enforcement. Within that, there's three properties, and motion coming out of committee is to recommend pursuing legal action with the city attorney. They're issuing a $300 citation every month that the property of 507 First Avenue Northeast remains occupied and unlicensed. Furthermore, 1106 Quint Street, obtaining an administrative search warrant and towing the vehicles. And lastly, 1111 Thirteenth Street Southeast, recommending a $300 citation every month until the accessory structure is removed, and I so move.
Second. Motion by Erickson, second by Chazak. Any more discussion? Seeing none, go to a vote. All in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Chairman Erickson.
All right, thank you. Our second item is to adopt a resolution approving the Lakes Area Drug Investigative Division Joint Powers Agreement, and I so move.
Second. Motion by Erickson, second by Chazak. Any more discussion?
I'll just add that the city of Brainerd, Baxter, Crow Wing County are all current members of the Lakes Area Drug Investigative Division, known as LATED. They have a joint powers agreement, and LATED Board has approved adding Malax Tribal Police Department Investigation Task Force. And if, Mr. President, well, I'll just leave it at that, since we have a motion on the table.
Okay. Any more discussion? Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, just one question. Is this the same as in years past where there is an administrative component to this grant that we're reimbursed for administrative time spent on it at the city?
The brunt of the administrative load would fall upon the sheriff's office as the fiscal agent, and they do not receive any compensation for that additional load that they take on in comparison to the other agencies.
All right, thanks, Chief.
I will say it's been an active division the last year or two, so pretty successful. Any more discussion? Seeing none, let's call the roll.
Bevins?
Yes.
Chazak?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Stunick?
Yes.
Jaeger?
Yep.
Erickson?
Yes.
O'Day?
Yes, that resolution passes. Chairman Erickson.
All right, thank you. Our third item is adoption resolution of grant agreement and award bids for Project 2407 Lowell Safe Road to School. Two portions to this motion, the first of which is to recommend award of the improvement 2407 contract to DeChantelle Excavating in the amount of $432,624.79, and I so move.
Second. Motion by Erickson, second by Chazak. More discussion?
Yeah, so we had upwards of $650,000 for this grant award. We are taking the low bid, all of the bids came in under that $650,000 mark, and this is for, again, Safe Road to School at Lowell, that we've discussed before, a variety of pedestrian enhancements, including enhanced crossings, bumpouts, refuge medians, and then the rapid flashing beacons.
Thank you. More discussion? Seeing none, Tony, can you please call the roll?
So there's two parts to this. That's the first part, the second part is the resolution. So the next part will be adopting the resolution of the grant.
Well, we could have still called the roll.
Yeah. We could have, but still can.
Catch up from when you missed.
Yeah, this is just the improvement 2407, awarding the contract to DeChantelle.
All right. No more discussion? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, same sign, that motion passes.
And then, Mr. Chair, the second part, adoption of the motion, was to adopt the attached resolution approving the terms of the Safe Road to School Grant Agreement.
Second. Motion by Erickson, second by Chazak.
And this would be the resolution.
Any more discussion? Tony?
Bevins?
Yes.
Chazak?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Stunick?
Yes.
Jaeger?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
O'Day?
Yes, that resolution passes. Chairman Erickson.
All right, our item number four, motion coming out of committee, is to recommend adopting the attached resolution in which enters into the cooperative construction agreement with MINDOT for the trunk highway 371B Willow Street Roundabout Project, and I so move.
Second. Motion by Erickson, second by Chazak. More discussion on that?
Yeah, so this is the project we've been talking about for quite a while, again, roundabout at 371B in Willow, and this is the cooperative construction agreement with MINDOT.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Seeing none, go ahead, Tony.
Bevins?
Yes.
Chazak?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Stunick?
Yes.
Jaeger?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
O'Day?
Yes, that resolution passes. Chairman Erickson.
All right, thank you. Our fifth item, approve event parking lot closure, farmer's market application with the downtown business. Motion coming out of committee is to approve the farmer's market request to conduct a farmer's market on Friday from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM, May 16th to October 10th, 2025, and I so move.
Second. Motion by Erickson, second by Chazak. More discussion on that?
Yeah, application for a farmer's market. They initially wanted to be on Front Street. There was some concerns from some of the local business owners about just access and closures, and staff worked with them to provide this option. Neighboring law firm does use that parking lot, staff worked out an agreement with them. They agreed to allow the, kind of give up their spaces for this time, so it'd be a good option to have a farmer's market during those months, so.
Okay. Thank you. Johnson.
The clarification on the motion, the staff recommendation was contingent upon the law firm agreeing, has the law firm agreed?
Thank you, they did, and we asked about that, and that's why we left the contingency off, because they did agree in writing, and...
Excellent, thank you.
Perfect. All right, any more discussion? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, same sign. Motion passes. Chairman Erickson.
All right, thank you. Item number six, motion coming out of committee is to award improvement 2501, 2025 Chip Seal Project to Asphalt Surface Technologies Corporation in the total bid amount of $162,337.90, and I so move.
Second. Motion by Erickson, second by Chazak. More discussion on that? Chairman Erickson.
Just that we received three bids, this is the low bid, and we previously approved the streets that this was bid for. I should say, too, to ensure that we came in under budget, we directed staff to have Greenwood Street listed as an ad alternate. Given where the bid came in, they were able to include that, so that all of the roads, including Greenwood, are included in this, and it is underbid or underestimate.
Thank you. More discussion? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, same sign. Motion passes. Chairman Erickson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Seventh item, this is Consider Transit Consultant Services. The motion coming out of committee is to direct staff to continue seeking consultant services through MINDOT and make a recommendation in June to city council with further options regarding transit operations in 2026, and I so move.
Second. Motion by Erickson, second by Chazak.
Some discussion, just the city of Brainerd provides administrative support for the transit services, a program through MINDOT. We hire a third-party service to provide the operations. Staff has documented several areas where the third-party vendors fallen short, to the point where they've been levying fines, which is in accordance with the MINDOT contract, ranging from $4,000 to $12,000 per month. They documented several maintenance issues, several customer service issues, and as part of that, because of that, MINDOT offers a consultant review, essentially. And that's what this motion is, is it's directing staff to move forward with the option that MINDOT provides for this consultant review.
Thank you, Chairman Erickson. President O'Day. Mr. Chazak.
Yeah, I did it in committee, I want to thank Jesse Dean for putting together a performance -- he has performance measures in this contract, so we are able to do what we're doing with not getting charged for services that aren't rendered, and that's very important, especially when you expect something and you're not getting it, you don't want to have to pay for it. So compared to the former three-year contract, this one had, let's say, more teeth in it, so I appreciate what he did.
Thank you, Mr. Chazak. More discussion? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, same sign. Motion passes. Chairman Erickson.
All right, item number eight, this is approval of placement of large planters near Holiday Station, near the high school. Motion coming out of committee is to approve staff placing one planter near the Holiday Station to prevent cars from parking on the sidewalk. I'll just add that that's Norwood Street between Fifth Street South and Sixth Street South, and I so move.
Second. Motion by Erickson, second by Chazak. More discussion on that?
Yes, I think a lot of people are familiar with this area. It's the sidewalk right next to Holiday. A lot of people have just been pulling up onto that sidewalk to park, quickly run in, very convenient. However, it is a safety risk, because that is a public sidewalk, and as the motion suggests, we're going to try to block that off with very aesthetic planters.
Thank you.
Could I add one more thing? I'll just say, ask staff to reach out to Holiday and just give them a heads up that this would be on the agenda, just given that it's such a, kind of a well-known convenience spot, so.
Thank you. Johnson?
Okay, I like this. I brought this issue up a while back. Thank you, staff, for bringing back a solution. I am a little worried about just one planter, because there's curb cuts on either side of that area, so that people could still maybe come in and try backing out, which is causing more conflicts and whatever. So if the one isn't the perfect solution... solution, could we find a second planter and potentially hit it on both sides in the future?
Mr. President?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I think that's an excellent point, we did talk about that a bit in committee. Not only that, but staff let us know that these planters come down in the winter, and so therefore it would be unblocked during the winter. We felt comfortable moving forward with this, with the, you know, kind of idea that we would kind of, kind of soften the community up to the idea, and then come back with a more permanent solution, a more year-round solution.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Any more discussion? None, let's go to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, same sign. Motion passes. Chairman Erickson.
All right, thank you, this is our last item, discussion and review of new city ordinance of street performers slash buskers. Recommendation coming out of committee, motion coming out of committee is to modify the draft ordinance that staff has prepared with council comments and submit at the next council meeting, and I so move.
Second. Motion by Erickson, second by Chesok.
So with this, we did have an application for street performers, and realized that we were a little bit deficient in the area of an ordinance that addressed that, to either approve and/or deny that. And so we directed staff to begin drafting an ordinance that would direct that. And, you know, again, the motion coming out of committee is to provide them comments on their draft and bring that back for approval at the next meeting.
Thank you. Mayor.
Yeah, can we strike the word "buskers"? Find another term for that.
I like it, I learned something.
It's a new word.
All right, what do we, what?
I didn't even know, well, it's a, it's a street performer for money.
Oh, oh, okay, all right.
Look it up.
All right, well, professional.
Very tasteful busker.
Yeah, 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 we only want top hat buskers.
Bussking. All right, any more, any more discussion on that? See none, let's go to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, same sign. Motion passes. Chairman Erickson?
End of report, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Erickson. Next, moving on to 7B, this is Personnel and Finance Committee Chairman Gabe Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. For those of you following along at home, our committee report starts at page 230 of 358 for our consideration in this two-week period. We have six items, the first of which is to approve the library repairs project, and the motion out of committee was to move forward awarding the bid, including the option of an additional $6,735 to balance the air systems in the project totaling $344,940.24 in project cost, and I so move.
Second. Motion by Johnson, second by Stunek. Johnson?
So this one we've had in front of us a couple of times, we did have $426,000 in the budget, we thought it was going to be $338, now it might be $344,000. They're having some humidity issues with HVAC unit that was installed just last year. So in this project, we can balance it with the $6,000, but perhaps it's warranty work and we won't have to spend the $6,000. And Kelly will be on the library board, making sure they pursue all avenues of getting the warranty work completed before we spend the money.
Excellent, thank you. More discussion? See none, go to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, same sign. Motion passes. Chairman Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next up is ending future rural service district properties, and the motion is to direct staff to bring the attached ordinance back to the next city council meeting as a first reading, and I so move.
Second. Motion by Johnson, second by Bevins. Johnson?
So we, we've talked about this at a number of council meetings, they have a draft ordinance ready, they have reviewed some properties who probably don't belong in the rural service district that we may be removing before adopting this ordinance, but this would, this would codify everybody who is legitimately in the rural service district as of today would be able to continue to stay there. We will not be adding anybody to that going forward, but this ordinance will be coming back in two weeks, James. Thank you.
That's correct. President O'Day. Mr. Chesok.
Gabe, can you tell me again, when a person then would, what changes for them where they're no longer eligible to be in the rural service if they're there now?
Once water and sewer is to the curb.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
More discussion? None, let's go to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, same sign. Motion passes. Chairman Johnson.
Thank you. Next up is a meter service worker position, and the motion is to approve the updated meter service worker job description and authorize staff to complete an internal job posting process to fill the position, and I so move.
Second. Motion by Johnson, second by Stunek. Johnson?
Yeah, you may remember this fall, this last fall, our meter service worker retired, we were, the Public Utility Commission at the time said, asked us to hold off on backfilling, maybe there'd need to be some changes to the position. We've reached the point where we're entering construction season, so they'd really, really need a meter service worker, so they want to hire the position now.
Thank you. Anyone else? See no more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Against, same sign. Motion passes. Chairman Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next up is a resignation, and the motion is to accept the resignation of Police Officer Gutenkauf, effective April 10th, 2025, and further to authorize staff to begin the hiring process to backfill the position, and I so move.
Second. Motion by Johnson, second by Bevins. Johnson?
So our fully-staffed police department is no more, but just temporarily, we're down from 27 to 26, but the chief's on it, so we'll have a 27th in there sooner than later.
Thank you. More discussion? See none, let's go to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, same sign. Motion passes. Chairman Johnson.
Thank you. Next up is a hiring of a CSO, and the motion is to ratify the hiring of Jackson Flett as a community service officer, effective April 22nd, 2025, at $21.31 per hour, and I so move.
Second. Motion by Johnson, second by Stunek. Chairman Johnson?
This is in the budget, as a reminder to everybody, that for the CSO positions, we don't budget a number of CSO officers, we budget a dollar amount that we spend on these part-time employees throughout the year. So the chief shuffles them around, you stay within budget regardless of how many we have or don't have.
Thank you. See no more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Against, same sign. Motion passes. Chairman Johnson.
Thank you. Next up is a reclassification, and the motion is to reclassify intern Brandon Bergow to a community service officer, effective April 23rd, 2025, and I so move.
Second. Motion by Johnson, second by Bevins. No discussion?
Splintery.
Any more discussion? Questions? See none, let's go to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, same sign. That motion passes. Chairman Johnson?
End of report.
Thank you. Moving on to number eight, this is unfinished business, 8A, we have a call for applicants. First, we will have the Honorable Mayor Bedeau.
The Honorable, for sure. I apologize, I told you all at home last time that we would have some nominations this time around, still waiting on a couple of applications to get their way into us, so we should have those at our next meeting. The following boards and commissions have spots available for you to come join us. Charter Commission, two terms expiring 2025, two terms expiring 2026, Housing Redevelopment Authority, one term expiring 2027, Library Board, one term expiring 2027. We also have the Public Utilities Commission, one term expiring 2028, Transportation Advisory Committee, two terms expiring 2025, and one term expiring 2026.
All right, thank you. And as council president, I just have two terms to fill for the Water Tower Committee, no expirations on those terms. So if you want to be a part of the Water Tower Committee, anybody in here, fill out an application. Next, we have 8B, this is adopt, this is adopting a resolution denying the CUP for My Neighbor to Love. This is Community Development Director, James Krambek.
Thank you, Mr. President. So at the April 7th, 2025 city council meeting, a motion was approved denying the conditional use permit request. Staff have attached a resolution summarizing the city council's findings. This was reviewed by the city attorney, so staff is recommending adopting the attached resolution denying the conditional use permit request.
Thank you, Mr. Krambek. So we're looking for a motion to adopt the, the attached resolution denying the conditional use permit request.
So I'll move Johnson.
Motion by Johnson, second by Stunek. Discussion by Erickson?
I voted against this denial then, and I'm going to do so again as well.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Tony, please call the roll.
Bevins?
No.
Chesok?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Stunek?
Yes.
Jaeger?
Yes.
Erickson?
No.
O'Day?
Yes, that resolution passes. Moving on to 8C, we have a first reading of proposed ordinance 1582, establishing the process for cannabis retail registration. This one looks like for, this, this one's for Connie?
It is.
Thank you, Connie, go ahead.
So as discussed at the last council meeting, the Office of Cannabis Management, OCM, is leaving it up to municipalities to create a process for selecting applicants if there's more than the retail businesses that have been established by the municipalities. OMC strongly suggested that municipalities work with their city attorney to come up with the process. There are 13 different types of cannabis licenses that have been established under state statute. Only six of the 13 licensed types may require municipal registration, and of those six, only three of those license could count towards the city's limit of two. For low, for example, for low potency hemp edible retailers, like what we see in the liquor stores or in gas stations, have to be registered with the city, but they do not count towards the maximum of two that's been set by the city. The process for issuing registrations are a lottery, first come, first served basis, rolling, merit-based, or anything other that we can come up with. Staff has been working with our city attorney. The process that is selected should be codified before approvals are issued, which puts the city in a time crunch, because OCM issued the rules on April 14th and said that they will be starting to notify applicants on the 15th to start working with local governments and for the zoning process. It is anticipated that some retail locations could be open in May. Also, the OCM is notifying only certain types of licenses at a time. For example, micro businesses will be the first type of license to be issued by the state. If the applicants are micro businesses with a retail endorsement, all of the city's registrations could be used before any of the mezzo businesses or retail endorsements, or cannabis retailer can even apply. To remedy this, council could consider eliminating the cap. Due to the time constraint and potential litigation, legal challenges in getting the information for the merit-based approach, staff is recommending the first come, first served based system. Included in the packet was a proposed ordinance if the council were to keep the two retailer cap. If passed, the city would use a first come, first served basis. So the recommended action, the council has two options for the city. Option one is looking at the time constraint, which this option would be to conduct the first reading of proposed ordinance 1582, an ordinance amending section 1110 of the Brandon City Code pertaining to cannabis, hemp, and retail related businesses, and to dispense with the actual reading. With this option, the proposed reading does not require a public hearing, so the city could motion to set a public hearing at the May 19th meeting, or to conduct the second reading. If there's no public hearing, the second reading of potential adoption could be done at the May 5th meeting. Another option to consider is removing the two retailer cap and provide direction to staff to amend ordinance 1568. And another option is to discuss a different methodology for determining the process for cannabis registration.
Thank you, Connie. So the Office of Cannabis, Cannabis Management changes the rules again, and here we are, scrambling to keep up with all their changing rules. Basically, we have to figure out if we want to keep it at, keep it at two, or just get rid of the cap. I don't think getting rid of the cap is a good idea. I'd love to see a merit-based approach, but I know it's, it's extra work and it's going to be a, a new ordinance. But I'd love to see or hear what the, the council thinks regarding this. If we do take first come, first served, my general feeling is whoever's more organized is probably going to come through first. And the first two that we see are probably going to be legitimate businesses, but we don't know for sure. So if we want to have any, any say over, you know, merit-based issues related to this, then we would have to go with the new ordinance. So, Mr. Johnson, do you have some comments?
Yeah, I just, looking at this, said it, we can do a lottery, we could do first come, first served, and those are two we talked about at the last meeting, last time this came up. And I think you had some questions from Mike and from myself, for sure, asking, can we do a merit-based system? Can we do something where the council reviews applications and makes sure these are viable businesses we want in our community before we issue the registration? It looks like that is an option. What does that look like? Are we going to be sued? We're great in, in the court of law, sometimes, sometimes. But what would a merit-based system look like, a legal merit-based system?
The only city that we knew that had a merit-based city was the city of Anoka, and we included their requirements in the packet. I think it would be very time-consuming, and I don't know if staff has the ability to gather all that information in a timely fashion to determine if it is or not. I think what really, why staff is recommending the first come, first served, is because we need to have something in our ordinances before we have to start issuing these registrations, and that could be in the next couple of weeks. So I think that's really why we looked at it, and the merit-based pay system, I think, does open the city up to potential issues.
So the state trips over its own feet for two years and we have five minutes to make a decision?
Yep.
It's absolutely ridiculous. I am with the council president, I think it would be premature to lift the cap from two, because we don't know how these type of businesses are going to impact communities, our community, or any community across the state. So I'd like to see that before talking about expanding it. But I would like to also give opportunity for local business people to operate businesses, as opposed to just outsiders coming in, swooping, swooping in, taking the permits. So that's, that's where I'm at, and I don't know if that helps at all, but thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Chesok?
Thank you. A question about the registration, if I missed it, I apologize. It's a permit you, based on what you're going to be selling, it's a different price, I read all that. And it's good for one year, correct? Whenever you decide to operate?
I think the initial one is for the initial registration plus, it's, it's good for 18 months, the very first one is, and then it's a year after that, is my understanding.
So if, if, if somebody came in, got the permit registration, it appears they have to have a location already established in the way I read that application, is that correct? Is that a requirement, that they have an actual location?
I do not know that for sure.
Okay. It, it, it says, it gives, it asks you to give the address you'll be operating on in the registration, so I'm assuming that would be a requirement, but I don't know that, that's why I'm asking. And then also, if, if somebody isn't able to make a go at this, you would assume they wouldn't then pay for another permit. But if they do, and they're not doing the business, I mean, you could just sit there and fail and keep going if they just paid that permit. And I don't know anybody that would do that, but once somebody says, okay, I'm done trying this, it doesn't work for me, that registration then becomes open for somebody else, is that how we would do that?
Ten grand.
Yes.
If there's only two allowed, that seem like the way we'd do it?
Yes, we would.
Okay.
Internally, we'd keep a rolling or a list of who all applied, only the top two, only the first two would get the registration. Probably for the first go-around would be for 18 months.
Okay. All right, that's my, some of my questions. I, I kind of agree with, I, I think a merit-based, based on what I read from, is it Anoka, they, that's a lot, a lot of, a lot of work, and I, I don't know how any of us are really qualified to, I don't know, to determine if they're going to be qualified, or, you know, merit, what, what determines their merit worth, you know, so. And then, we're doing this to say, we don't think you can, or we think you'd be great at this, and then what, they, they either succeed or they fail, and it just seems like a lot of time to do merit-based for what's in it for the city of Brainerd.
Thank you, Mr. Chesok. Mr. Bevins?
Mr. Chair, just want to clarify, I do not believe we have set the fee for this permit, have we?
Connie?
We did initially, but now the state is going back that it's 50% of their license fee, so that's why you see on the registration form up to, up to, up to. So we don't have set prices for these registrations, because we don't know yet what the state's fees are going to be.
So we couldn't, we couldn't set a fee outside of the state of Minnesota's parameters?
Correct.
Like to go through merit-based?
No, I was just thinking 10 grand, or 150 grand.
I like that, and nobody will come.
Well, it would be another way to call the herd, so to speak. And since Mr. Johnson had brought up that we could, if we were going to be a licensee partner, make up to a million dollars, I think 150 grand is a bargain.
True.
I'm just saying, there's enough, you know, at this point, since the state hasn't given us any direction, yet they are going to mandate that we accept applications, I might consider taking advantage of opportunity, so to speak.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bevins. Attorney Langill, what do you think about that? How much freedom do we have in a registration fee that you can tell, so far in this week's rules?
My understanding, I don't have all that in front of me, but my understanding is that it's going to be half of what the state requires, they're going to be coming out with that pretty soon, that's what that's going to be.
That's what that's going to be. I think any attempt to put a hundred and fifty thousand dollar number on there is...
Santa's going to deliver it.
Yeah, right. I don't think that's going to fly, to be honest.
Okay, so we, we'd have to wait until we see what that number is, and then...
Correct, because that's the cap.
Up to half or less, so...
You can go up to half.
Can we just say, just, as an, as a council, I think we would probably agree that the maximum that the state allows is, is what we want to do?
Yeah, that's the easy way of doing it, yes.
Okay. Next, we just have to decide between the merit-based or first come.
Mr. Chair, I, when you're ready, I'll, I'll take a stab at a motion just to get this off dead center. And my motion would be to accept staff's recommendation and conduct the first reading of proposed ordinance fifteen eighty-two this evening and ordinance amending section one-one-one-zero of the Brainerd City Code pertaining to cannabis hemp and related businesses, dispense with the actual reading, and this would be a first come, first served. And with setting the fee at the state maximum.
Second.
Motion by Beavins, second by Chesak. Any more discussion? Seeing none? I'm good with it? All right, uh, let's just go to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, same sign.
Oh, you got to read it.
We got to read it?
He's new.
Do we?
Oh, okay, I'll change my motion.
Your motion?
You're going to, you're going to vote on it? You're going to vote yes this time?
Yes, we don't have to read it.
All right, that motion passes unanimously, kind of.
God, you're going to put me into cardiac arrest.
All right.
So then the next option would be, do you want to hold a public hearing? If so, you would set the public hearing for the May nineteenth meeting, otherwise, we could have the second reading and potential adoption at the May fifth meeting. If you, you don't, you're not required...
We don't have to hold a public hearing on it?
You do not have to hold a public hearing on this ordinance.
Mr. Chair, I move that we forego the public hearing and hold the second reading at the first meeting in May.
Second again.
Motion by Beavins, second by Chesak. I agree. Um, we're just trying to figure it out with as little power as we have over the cannabis industry. Uh, Mr. Johnson, you have...
I'm going to vote no. I love public hearings. I love hearing from the public.
It's the timing that...
The, the, the timing would give us an issue, but I do think the public ought to be heard on marijuana sales in the community. So I'll, I'll vote no.
I agree with you, but the timing does put us into a, a bit of an issue where we don't know what the penalty is on us when the state decides they were going to start punishing us.
Well, I don't think they'll notice.
Mr. Chair, this is not about, we've already had that public hearing on whether we're going to sell marijuana or not. We're going to sell, we're going to allow two people to sell. This is just the application process.
That is true.
So I, I think we should just rip the bandage off, make Stunek the weed czar and move forward.
He, he's already taken care of snow.
Yeah, that's right. He could have a little gnome, then when it turns green, it's high.
Oh, boy. Moving on. Any more discussion?
Snow gnome.
Seeing none, let's go to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, same sign. All right, that motion passes six to one.
We got to read it.
Next, we're going on to number nine, that's new business, nine A. We have a public hearing and a resolution ordering the improvement and order preparation of plans for improvement twenty-three fourteen Hawkins Ronald Joseph Resurfacing Project. Uh, Mike Habigors, is this you?
Yes, Mr. President. Sorry, I had to regroup after that last, uh, comment there. I am on the wrong agenda.
Help this mo...
Business. Sorry, yes. Thank you, Mr. President. Moore Engineering has sent notice to the published, to, for the published public hearing for improvements twenty-three fourteen Hawkins Ronald Joseph Resurfacing Project pursuant the notice of hearing and to continue with the assessment proceedings. The council must hold a public hearing to consider the improvements for and hear testimony for or against the set improvements. Following the public hearing, if council adopts the attached, attached resolution and the, that orders the improvements and prepares plans, staff would present final plans at the upcoming council meetings, requesting final approval and authorization to advertise for bids. The streets for resurfacing are Hawkins Drive, Joseph Street, Ronald Street, and the alley between Sixth and Seventh Streets, between Paul and Joseph Street. Moore Engineering is here to answer any questions very specifically regarding, uh, this, um, assessment. And staff is recommending that we hold a public, uh, for this hearing, public improvements and hear testimony for or against the set improvements, and also for adopting the attached resolution in order to, for orders of the improvement and preparation of the plans. With that, we can take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Habigors. Uh, Mr. Beavins, you have a question?
I do, thank you. For Mr. Habigors.
Thank you.
I just want to know, have we decided a methodology on the alley sewer that's a hundred feet deep? Are we going to tunnel or are we going to dig to China?
Regarding the sewer?
Yeah, whatever, whatever held this up last year because it was so deep.
We're going to line that.
Oh, we're, okay, so we're not digging it up this time?
Correct.
We're just going to line it?
Yes.
Okay. And that can be done without a huge trench?
Correct.
Okay. Perfect.
But that, what's that happening?
That is...
Chesak? Uh, thank you.
Go ahead.
When, when is that liner plan to happen?
Yes, I'm going to refer to Jesse. He's working on the ten-year construction plan.
That is something we're going to discuss with the council of how we want to start prioritizing, uh, mining and how that fits into the budget with the sanitary sewer fund.
So it's ways down the road, though?
Uh, depending on how the council wants us to...
But there is a water line for the two blocks.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
And, Mr. President, I'd like to also add regarding the sewer line, that is, that is something that will be on our, on, on our construction project, and we're working with BPU to get all of those construction projects on the same page. And, um, regarding the sewer line, that is something that we need to address. The sewer fund is not very healthy, and that's something that we'll need to address at a later date. Thank you.
Any more questions for staff? Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. President. That begets a question. It's like, yes, it takes time, it'll be a later date, but I'm hearing a lot of, oh, I don't know if we can, it's just so much work. We're actually going to get to that later date, and we're going to address our rates, we're going to address, these are all steps that we are taking, and they will be before the council in the foreseeable future, right?
Correct. And we have brought the study of the sewer study before council, and it is, we need to really address that aggressively.
Yeah, well, we increase everybody's rates and then we start fixing stuff. It's pretty simple. We just got to get it before the council.
Yep.
I like it.
We do have a meeting in, in seven days regarding workshop priorities. Uh, we can discuss this item there, too. So, um, if there's no more questions, we do have the engineers up here, too, if you guys have any further questions for them. Looks like not, if not.
Can I ask a question?
I'm, I'm about to open the public hearing, so, um, yeah, if there's anybody here, we will open the public hearing, it's eight forty-eight. And if there's anybody here regarding this project that wants to come forward and address the council, do so now. Just ask that you state your name and address before you speak.
Good evening, I'm Jerry Steinke. Uh, I live at three fifteen Hawkins Drive in Brainerd, and we received the notice about improvement to Hawkins Drive east of Fourth Street Southwest. Uh, my question to the council is what specific improvements are being proposed for our street? Is it simply replacing the, repaving and replacing the curbs? Or are you planning to widen the street or install sidewalks? I'd like to have an answer about specifically what improvements are being planned for Hawkins Drive. Thank you.
So, our, our city engineer is right here. He can give you all the details you want on this specific project at any given time, um, outside of the meeting, I suppose. But, yeah, he, he'll, he'll fill you in with any question that you have. That's our, that's our, that's your guy.
Great, thank you.
You bet. Anyone else here for this project that wants to come up? Come on up.
Yeah.
Hi, Steve Quinn at seventeen oh-four South Seventh Street. So, live, uh, the, all, on the alley as well as Ronald Street and, uh, South Seventh. So, um, while we have, uh, actually saw and signed a petition to work on the alley, and I believe that was a sewer project referred to, and I see that then this was bringing the resurfacing of all of Ronald Street, which, you know, running it's a hundred, uh, hundred-yard street between Sixth and Seventh, and really is in quite a good shape with the curbs in good condition. So I just question the need to do, uh, that resurfacing project with, with the other pass where the alley would obviously work, we would go through. So that would be my question to the engineers about the need for that.
Okay. Yeah. Jesse's there to answer those questions. We did, we did, uh, have some debate on that one, if I can shed a little bit of light on it. He'll, he can give you more detail, but, uh, replacement of everything that's underground is going to require part of that street to be torn up, so I think the idea was rather than having a patch there, just to redo the street, uh, and so it's, it's aging at the same rate. So, but he can fill you in on any, any more details.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here for this project?
Hello, Anthony Whipple, six oh-six Ronald Street.
Thank you.
So we actually live on the, uh, next door to Steve, uh, but on the other corner, so we live on South Sixth and Ronald. So if they're resurfacing Ronald and the alley at the same time, how are we supposed to get access to our home? Because the driveway is on Ronald and the alley is through, uh, the backside there. Uh, additional that, uh, what they'll be doing with the mail delivery and garbage pickup all at the same time as that's happening as well, so I'd like to discuss that with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It'll be, it'll be a bit of a mess, but hopefully it goes quick. And he'll, he'll answer your, he'll answer your questions on those details. Come on up.
Gary Lane, sixteen fifty-four South Seventh Street. I live, uh, across from Steve, um, on Ronald Street. And, uh, I kind of question whether Ronald Street really needs to be replaced. I understand patchwork. They did a patchwork when they did a side street on Seventh Street. Um, you know, it's just something you got to deal with. The project has really kind of bloomed. It was going to be just the resurfacing of the alleys to begin with, and then we kind of requested that, well, maybe we should look at the water lines being replaced because they did it on Seventh Street, uh, further down from us going north. Um, they added it on to the project, which was a good thing, I think. But now, we're looking at a, a rather large, uh, assessment now versus what really started out as more reasonable. I think we're looking at probably three times or four times the assessment of what, uh, was originally. And I kind of just, kind of question, you know, doing all that.
Understood. Thank you.
Hi, Murray Francis. I live at sixteen oh-three South Sixth Street. There are only three houses on, on Joseph Street, three houses. And it's a double whammy for those of us who live there. It's not only the street, but then it's the alley. I don't even have access to the alley. But here, my bill that my neighbor graciously told me the cost is estimated at fourteen thousand dollars. I'm going to have to sell my homes.
Anyone else that wants to address the council on this project? Come on up.
Joan Vigner, two oh-seven Hawkins Drive. Come October fourth, we will be on Hawkins Drive thirty-six years. And I have pictures here of Hawkins Drive when it was a dirt road. I don't think you have come to the decision of things that would bother me. Will our mail be delivered every day? Hawkins Drive is a dead end. Will the garbage people be able to come and pick up our garbage? Can we get in and out? It's a hill, and so there are many little questions. They indicated the percentage of what we would be charged, but the actual amount has not been told to us. I appreciate your saying how we can pay it, and that's great. But will we find out before you do this project what all of these little things will be answered, or am I being silly?
I don't think you're being silly.
Okay.
Uh, it, the official numbers don't always add up until after everything's been bid out, um, or it's been, or the, the project has been awarded and that kind of thing, so...
These are just a lady's thinking.
Yep, okay.
Okay?
Yep. Your guy's right there again.
Okay.
He's everybody's best friend.
Thanks for your time, I appreciate it.
All right. Jesse, did you leave a, a card? Or nine? Okay. There's a card for everybody that wants to talk to Jesse tomorrow, right in the back.
Twenty-seven cards.
You got to talk to Tracy though.
Dan Kirstensen, sixteen oh-six South Seventh Street. Uh, I guess I was just confused with the letter when it came. Uh, proposed an estimate of sixty-three dollars and twenty-nine cents per linear foot of the alley. Considering there's two people on, for each linear foot of the alley, uh, I guess that's a hundred and twenty-six dollars and fifty-eight cents per foot of the alley, it's fifteen feet wide. It seems very excessive for resurfacing of the alley, and I, I guess I will talk to Jesse to figure out how he comes up with those numbers and, and how that makes sense, but it's a very large expense for people who live in homes that range from a hundred and fifty thousand to, to two hundred and seventy-five thousand, so I just, it, it's a big hit. I just bought the house two years ago, and it, this is a, going to be a massive increase, so, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here for this project? Or anyone online? If you are, press star three, please. I'll ask again one more time. If there's anybody here for this project, please come up. Looks like not. It's eight fifty-six PM, we will close the public hearing. Thank you for speaking, for those of you that did come up. We are looking for a motion to adopt the attached resolution in which orders the improvement and preparation of the plans.
I'd move adoption of the resolution.
Motion by Johnson?
Second.
Second.
Second by Erickson? Okay. Chesak? Second by one of those guys? Any more discussion on this one? Seeing none, Tony, please call the roll.
Beavins?
Yes.
Chesak?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yeah.
Stunek?
Yes.
Jaeger?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
O'Day?
Yes. That resolution passes. All right, moving on to nine B, we have a consideration for a conditional use permit for the construction of a church, fifteen eleven Northern Pacific Road. And I believe this one is for James Kramick.
Thank you, Mr. President. So Mike Higgins, on behalf of the Northern Pacific Center, has applied for a conditional use permit for the construction of a church in an existing building at fourteen eighty-one Northern Pacific Center Road. The proposed use meets all requirements established in this ordinance, and there are no use-specific regulations for churches. Planning Commission considered this request and held a public hearing at their meeting on April sixteenth and unanimously recommended approval as presented.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yeah, Mr. Chesak.
I'd move to approve.
Motion by Chesak?
I'll second.
Second by Johnson. Discussion, Johnson?
Yeah, I had a couple. Can I ask staff questions?
Yeah, go ahead.
So do all churches in Brainerd need a conditional use permit to operate?
I believe as of now in the allowed use table. That is something that we are working on within the allowed use table. It's an ordinance that the Planning Commission's currently working on. We'll be reviewing an amended potential ordinance for the allowed use table, but I believe as currently constructed, they are all CUPs.
Is that legal under the First Amendment, Joe? Yeah. Okay. Because I thought, I thought the Northern Pacific Center had, was in kind of a Goldilocks zoning district where they can kind of develop pretty much anything, but they still need the CUP for the church.
Yeah, so that's correct. So there are things that can be added to that planned unit development. Specific uses can be changed around. The underlying zoning district is town center, which requires a conditional use permit.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? More discussion? Looks like none. Let's see. This is not a resolution. All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Same sign. The motion passes. Moving on to 9C, we have a conditional use permit for consideration for expansion of adult daycare services at 1919 South Sixth Street. Mr. Kramvik.
Thank you, Mr. President. So Productive Alternatives has submitted an application for an interior remodel and conditional use permit to allow for the expansion of adult daycare services. Adult daycare falls under commercial daycare facilities under the definitions in the zoning code, which is a conditional use in the general commercial district. That is the zoning district where this property lies. The proposed project meets all requirements of the zoning code, and staff had no concerns regarding drop-off and parking, which is typically what's reviewed for these types of uses. The Planning Commission considered this request and held a public hearing at their meeting on April 16th and unanimously recommended approval as presented. And I can answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Kramvik. Does anybody have questions for Mr. Kramvik?
Motion to approve, Jaeger.
Second.
Motion by Jaeger, second by Johnson. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Same sign. That motion passes. Moving on to 9D, we have a consideration for interim use permit renewal for a short-term rental at 714 Seventh Street South. And Mr. Kramvik, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. So Mighty Homes LLC has applied for the renewal of a short-term rental at 714 Seventh Street South. Rental has been operating for one year, and there have been no issues or concerns from the property that the planning, that the community development department has received. So Planning Commission considered this request and held a public hearing at their meeting on April 16th and unanimously recommended approval with the following conditions. Continue submitting lodging tax to the Finance Department on a monthly basis. The interim use permit shall expire on April 21st, 2027, so a two-year renewal. And then staff did recommend the City Council add an additional condition that states the interim use permit shall terminate upon sale or transfer of the property title. And I can answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Kramvik? Mr. Jaeger?
Yeah, Mr. Kramvik. At the Planning Commission, there was some dialogue that stated that the applicant was, misread the due date of the, of the April due date, I believe it was. Would you consider the writing to be ambiguous, or is there anything that you could see in the writing that would lead us to believe that we didn't write the conditions of when it was due clearly?
Now with the conditional use part of it, I do know he owns multiple short-term rentals in different jurisdictions. So I think from what he told me, he was confused on that versus the actual rental license of the city. But from the conditional use permit and what he receives from the county certification, there would be no confusion.
Okay. Awesome. I just wanted to make sure that our, it wasn't something that we were doing that led to the problem. That's all. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Jaeger. Any other questions?
I'd move to approve with the conditions.
Second.
Motion by Erickson, second by Jaeger. Discussion on the motion? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to 9E, this is the first reading of proposed ordinance 1581 to consider data center, data centers. Again, I think this is, Mr. Kramvik, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. So the Planning Commission reviewed the proposed data center ordinance at their March 19th meeting and included recommendations from the Public Utilities Director. The Planning Commission held a public hearing at the April 16th meeting. One individual spoke. It was a member from the TC family that said they were in favor of the ordinance. The ordinance does have kind of checks and balances before and after the data center opens, applies, and looking at sound requirements within the MPCA regulations. So with that, the Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the ordinance. Staff recommends a motion to conduct the first reading of proposed ordinance 1581 and to dispense with the actual reading. Note to dispense with the actual reading of the ordinance must be unanimous. And I can answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Kramvik. Anybody on council have questions for staff on the ordinance? Mr. Chezak?
Yeah, I'm reading through here. It says, prior to approval, the developer shall apply for a sewer extension permit with the MPCA and submit a water and wastewater, water and wastewater plan for review by the Public Works Department and Public Utilities Department. Wouldn't you want that to be approved before, they get the, they get it all approved, so you got to submit your plan? They should apply for it before, prior to approval. Just apply. It doesn't say that she'll receive a accepted, what do you call it? So they're applying for approval, but shouldn't they, shouldn't we, shouldn't we approve this once they gain the approval of that?
So that wording was directed by former Public Utilities Director Chris Evans. I think it's a way for them to review the plans and generally be okay with the plans without having to go through the entire approval process, which I'm not sure what that length looks like. Jesse does have maybe some clarification as well.
I can quick clarify. So Minnesota rules requires 180-day prior to construction timeframe for the MPCA review. So this, that's a pretty long timeframe ahead of the project. So it does give us some time to look at those plans, too.
I didn't know that. So, okay, thank you.
Jesse, with that MPCA 180-day plan, if that were to, if we were to fail through the MPCA, that would essentially kill the project anyway, correct?
Most likely.
Okay. Unless they were to change those plans.
Correct.
Mr. Kramvik?
So certainly contingencies could be put on the conditional use permit. It is a conditional use permit in the industrial district, but the building permit also would not be issued without an approved connection.
Okay. All right. Any more questions? Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, it's prior to approval, another subdivision F in Section 4. Prior to approval, loads over 1 megawatt in capacity will be responsible for having a system impact study completed by the appropriate power transmission owner-operator in the area. Can you give me an example, like three? Give me three examples of a data center utilizing less than 1 megawatt of capacity?
So data centers are really any type of potential storage. So you're looking at like a CTC, county buildings that have data storage. They might not have to go through the conditional use permit process, but would need to go through this process. So there are, anytime, anytime you're doing cloud storage or anything like that and you have servers, there's potential, if you go over 1 megawatts, which is still quite a bit, that you would need that provision.
It's a lot, but not for, not for a data center.
Not for, yeah, not for a crypto center.
But what's a system impact study and completed by the appropriate power transmission owner? Is that a study that would be done effectively by BPU in the area in most of Brainerd?
So we could get clarification from Brainerd Public Utilities before the second reading on that part of it. They, I'm not sure. They may have to hire a third person to do a system study and then be something that Brainerd Public Utilities would review. That's a potential assumption, but again, we could get clarification.
Yeah, I was just wondering if that, I don't know, is adding a little bit too much regulation, but it's just my question. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Any more questions for staff? I have one based off of his 1 megawatt question. Do we have any businesses that are not official data center or crypto mine in the city that use more than 1 megawatt that would be subject to this after we approve it?
So again, we'd probably have to get some information from Brainerd Public Utilities on that. But yeah, certainly gave some examples of cloud storage with the county CTC that, you know, certainly could fall under that as well.
I just wouldn't want this ordinance to hinder any businesses coming in that might be using a lot of power, but they're not a data center. So I guess that would be my only concern there. I'm not going to, I'm not going to vote no on this just based on that, but with that in mind, I don't want to scare anyone away either.
So this would pertain specifically to data centers only?
So if it's, if it's-
So if it's an industrial use, yeah. If it's industrial use of some other nature, it would only pertain to data centers?
Okay.
Outside of what other BPU requirements there may be.
Got it. So if CTC expands a data center type of operation inside their office building and gets to 1.5 megawatts somehow, that won't necessarily apply to them. This won't apply to them?
If it is related to their cloud storage side of things.
Okay. Okay, any more discussion? Any questions? Seeing none? Let's go to a vote. This is the first reading. Is this, this has to be unanimous? For the chief, I'm just want, I want the chief to know for sure.
I know.
Okay.
I've already got looks.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Same sign. Motion passes.
President O'Day, who made the motion and second on that? I moved to adopt or hold the first reading and dispense with the reading.
Second.
We'll just do that again. Motion by Johnson, second by Chezak. All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Same sign. Now it passes.
Thank you, Jeff.
All right. Moving on to number 10, we have staff reports. Tony Gage? Chief Davis?
Nothing to add, thank you.
Sean Strong?
Nothing tonight.
Connie Hillman?
Yes, just a reminder again that the special general election for Senate District 6 race will be held on Tuesday, April 29th. All of the polling locations will be open again from 7:00 AM to six, or 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. With Ward 4, Precincts 1 and 2 will be held here at the chambers rather than at St. Andrews.
I have a question. What does Public Utility Commission meeting do that day?
They will be held at the Public Utilities. It should be noted that they will be held at their location since we will be using the chambers.
Okay.
Thank you. Mike Havigorst?
Thank you, Mr. President. We had, we conducted an Easter egg hunt at Gregory Park. We had a great turnout. Thanks for everyone that attended. And thank you, Chief, for sending some officers over there, too. It was well received. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Havigorst. Mr. Kramvik?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to give City Council an update on some of the ordinances that Planning Commission's currently working on. So one of them is the industrial off-street parking requirements. This is potentially allowing Class 5 parking in the rear yard for industrial properties. They did a direct staff to bring this back as a public hearing at the next meeting. Outdoor sale screening requirements, potentially loosening screening requirements while continuing to regulate screening requirements for abutting residential uses. The allowed use table, which I had mentioned earlier, the Commission will review a draft of the amended table at the next meeting. And then finally, the Shoreland District, staff have begun reviewing other jurisdiction regulations and have been having discussions with the DNR. A DNR will review the ordinance prior to the Planning Commission to ensure the city is following, following all statutory requirements. End of report.
Thank you, Mr. Kramvik. Joseph Langill?
Nothing here, thank you.
Chris Schubert? Jesse Dean? Eric Sharpton here.
Nothing this evening.
You?
We're rolling now.
Mr. Broyles?
I just want to say thank you. I had a great week off last week in Santa Fe with family. And one of the reasons I was able to have a great week and not think about work very often is we've got a great staff. So I just want to thank Connie. She was the acting city administrator last week and the entire staff. They do a great job, and they really allowed me to just focus on my grandson and not think about work. So I appreciate that. The other thing was, it was mentioned already that we have the meeting a week from tonight for council to set some priorities for staff. As far as the suspense tracker that we've talked about the last couple of meetings, the last comments I recall were, we want that in an Excel spreadsheet. We want to see some colors. And we want to see a percent complete, something along those lines. So we, staff are going to present to the council a week from tonight, that meeting, kind of our template for a finished product. And I think that'll be perfect timing when we get priorities from council. We can start rolling those in, and we'll create a baseline, and we'll go from there. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, moving on to council member reports. Start with the Chief Stunek?
I have nothing.
All right. Councilman Chezak?
Yeah, happy Easter, a day late to everybody, but we had a fantastic Sunday at church. The Teen Challenge Choir was there, and they blew the roof off the place. And, you know, when you go to a service like that on Easter Sunday, and it's, it's remarkable when you see that, hear the testimony from a handful of the individuals going through that and how, how that, that program really, really is a benefit to so many people over the years. And a lot of them don't make it the first time or the second time, but they keep going back and they get it, and it's just a joy to hear. And praise the Lord, the King has risen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chezak. Mr. Bevins?
Thank you. Saturday, I attended the Easter egg hunt at Gregory Park. Absolutely fantastic job by our Public Works Department, our Parks and Rec Department, and the Rotary Club. It was an absolute circus. We were one monkey away from having to get a permit for a circus in the city of Brainerd. Next up, the Northside Residents meet tomorrow, Tuesday, 6 o'clock. Mr. Havigorst is going to be the special guest. That's at the Senior, well, I can't call it Senior anymore, it's the Center, the place where you guys get your donuts on Thursday. And the last thing is, I passed out. Everyone got one of these? News from the ARB, the Bike Park, which is kind of a two-piece skill building area as well as an adaptive cycling area. Hopefully will be open as early as the first week in May. So that's a pretty exciting thing for the local community, partially in the city of Brainerd. And very lastly, the Friends of the Library had their annual book sale in the Brainerd Mall. I worked three, four days last week dropping up books and selling books. If you've never been to that, it is crazy. The people that line up, if you get there at 9:30, there's more people in that mall on that morning than there has been in 364 days since the last book sale. Thank you.
Kelly, can you send this to me in an email?
Yeah. The Bike Park thing?
Yeah.
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Yep, you'll have it tomorrow.
Thank you, Mr. Bevins. I just want to ask how many eggs you found?
The three-year-olds were mean. I didn't get any.
He's got a couple in his pocket.
But I know a couple of rotarians, so I got a bag of candy.
Okay, cool.
And a picture with the bunny.
Mr. Jaeger?
Yeah, sorry, but this is our, our airport report coming up here, so I'm just going to go through a couple of quick things. Number one, we moved ahead with the purchase of a new cupping plow, big piece of equipment that's going to be at the airport. It's going to make us much more efficient, much faster. It was $620,000 is what we paid for a cupping plow out there. But through grants from the feds and some other entities, we, as a local match, only had to come up with about $15,000 bucks. So it was a nice move of fiscal responsibility out there as we're moving forward. And the good news is, despite an unknown source of sabotage or at the very least covert resistance, we will be selling our old piece of equipment to our good friends, Bill and Cassandra, at our, at St. Cloud Airport, good friends of ours. So we're looking forward to helping them out with a piece of equipment they're looking for. Also, we had a meeting last Friday with the stakeholders. As we, as you know, there's been a request by the county for a May budget presentation by our airport director that is supposed to encompass five years. It looks like it will be in fairly good detail for one year with some kind of tag marks for the remaining four years after that. And I would also like to mention Darrell Palmer, who put vastly more time into this than he really should have, a very valued commission member. He was really doing work that really wasn't his. So I'd like to thank Darrell for that. Also, there was a motion made to move our airport meetings to these very chambers, and it didn't get seconded. Didn't get seconded. Didn't get seconded. So, uh, the airport meetings will remain at the airport for the indefinite future.
The homeless people.
We have a lease coming up for CAP. That is the Civil Air Patrol. Uh, we've been leasing them a hangar, a, uh, a, a building that they, a classroom building, uh, for $1 a year for the last 10 years. That's coming up. Uh, so the, the airport commission will be looking at that as, uh, the buildings need a lot of work and there's some, something definitely to be talked about there. And, uh, the bit, probably the bigger news is we decided as a commission to not move ahead at this time with a replacement deputy director. So we are going to get a better grasp of our finances out there and, uh, maybe make that decision in the future. Uh, but for now, we did not replace our deputy director. Uh, two more things real quickly. One is, uh, I want to call out a citizen, Sarah Tisi, who took time out of her day to come to the Planning Commission meeting, sit all the way through the meeting, all the way up until the point of the open mic when she came up and she, uh, gave her name and she thanked the commission uh, for the creation of the ordinance and thanked the staff for the time that they put into it and said that she was happy. And I just wanted to say thank you for her, for stepping forward and, and, uh, showing some appreciation to the work that, uh, volunteers do on our commissions. And finally, in closing, I would like to publicly apologize to Mr. Mike Higgins. It absolutely was not my intent to, uh, to, to, for my appetite to retain, uh, to retain the, uh, the buffer there to be received as any step of malice or malice or forward advance. You're a valued member of this community. Uh, you've done a ton for Brainerd. I, I, I want you as a partner with us moving forward. I apologize. And that is, uh, that's the end of my report. Thank you.
What the CAP is at the airport?
CAP is the Civil Air Patrol. It's an auxiliary of the Air Force. Air Force gives them exactly $0, as I understand. Zero. None. Zero. Hence, the reason why they get a building for $1 for us. We are talking about doubling the, uh, the lease.
Two bucks?
Two bucks. Per year.
Hundred percent increase.
Twenty dollars over 10 years.
Thank you, Mr. Jaeger. Uh, Chairman Johnson?
Thank you. I have a couple of things. I, I like, or, uh, Councilman Jaeger's comments that there was positive feedback at the Planning Commission for the hard work our staff does in this community. And I think it's, it's important for all members of the community, citizens of Brainerd or not, to, to respect our employees here at the city of Brainerd. I heard from the same constituent who brought to me the holiday parking problem and asked for the ballard. I think he'll appreciate the planter, but he also said he was driving down Sixth Street recently and it looks like a dump. There are cars, there are boats, there are all kinds of things parked on front lawns, on sidewalks, where we do not allow them to be parked, so I don't know if that's police. I don't know if that's community development. But I would like to lodge a formal complaint to all of the illegally parked cars on Sixth Street and have you guys go drive up and down there tomorrow and see what can't be done about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Complaint driven.
And I complained about the entirety of South Sixth Street, Jeff.
Complaint received.
Chairman Erickson?
Uh, thanks, Mr. President. We've heard about and took action on all the Planning Commission items, so I don't, won't give an update there. But, uh, next up for me, uh, this Thursday, liaison to the Region 5 Development Commission. Uh, look forward to participating and attending that meeting. That's it for me.
Thank you, Chairman Erickson. And I skipped over the Honorable Mayor Bedeau for his report, but please do so now.
I'll try to hurry, but I got a couple of things and a couple of announcements as well. First of all, uh, happy Easter to everybody and, uh, I hope everybody enjoyed time with their family. I know I did. It's a great day to be out. Uh, Gregory Park, fantastic job. I know it was your guys' first year. We got to get that sound system figured out, but we will. We'll figure that out. Uh, there is a park board meeting tomorrow. I will not be in attendance because I will be watching baseball in Cold Springs. Great historic park over there. Uh, but I heard you're going to a meeting afterwards. Bring the master plan with you when these vultures, vultures from North Brainerd come after ya.
Ooh, those are your neighbors.
I know.
Crack that whip.
Crack that whip. Let them see the master plan before they start.
Same 450 a month.
Coming after ya. Uh, I was able to attend the Bladeck Board Meeting last week, uh, with James and with, um, um, I, I want to call you Nick, but I'm trying to be more official by that, but with, with Nick. Uh, it was a great meeting to sit through, um, and, uh, I want to, I want to thank them for having us. Uh, one thing that did come out in that meeting, making it official, announcing the mayor's initiative on economic development. Uh, myself and the president of the EDA, Mr. Jaeger, will be teaming up with James Kramvik to come up with a couple of, uh, concept, some pie in the sky kind of concepts to bring back to the council. Just show a few things about what we think there's some potential in the city in terms of some movement we could make. Uh, looking at what we could do with some inefficient properties, that sort of thing. Uh, both on the commercial industrial side, but also on the residential side as well. So I look forward to bringing some of that stuff back to you guys as well.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, may I?
Yeah.
Uh, I totally forgot that myself and Mr. Jaeger attended the project management team for the Highway 210 reconstruction and the, uh, Bedeau Memorial Highway. It's a no-go.
We've been trying. I tried to get my name on the disc golf course.
You have to be dead.
I tried to get my name on the disc golf course. I tried getting my name on the, the itchy zebra over here and none of it's happening. I don't know what's going on. Uh, but I do want to say as well with Bladeck, they're having their annual meeting. They have asked mayors, uh, from, uh, the local area. Uh, myself, Daryl Olson from Baxter, um, Tyler from Pequot, as well as, uh, Jackson from Crosslake. We will be speaking at their annual meeting. And specifically, it is on, and I want to quote, "We are highlighting current priorities, challenges, and opportunities across our communities." What a great opportunity for us next week to have some priorities that you guys can give to me that I can, uh, take with to that and let our business owners know what we are looking for. So looking for some guidance from you on that. And last but not least, the most important announcement of the night. Chief, we have a date. Ladies and gentlemen, Police versus Firefighter Softball Showdown, July 24th. It's a Thursday. She gonna be hot. I don't know what you're thinking, Chief, but Chief wanted it in July. It's going to be hot. It's going to be steamy, but at the same time, we're going to, uh, smack some softballs around. Uh, if you were able to attend that last year, ton of fun. Same kind of concept. It is a softball game slash performance. So just so our Who won last year? Chief, who won last year?
What was the date and time, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Jaeger. Uh, Police Department by a
Result.
And, and he's picking a new, a new, probably hot date. So he's really laying it down.
All the 22-year-olds.
Yeah. Fire Department.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Everyone has to be in.
We got some youth. Just, so everybody knows, uh, Parks Department, this is my announcement to you as well, that we'll, we'll be joining forces again on this event. Um, but that's the date that has been selected by both our, uh, firefighters and our police. Thursday, July 24th. And I'll have to double check the time, but I think we started at 6:00 last time, I think we did?
We're ready at 8:00.
I'll figure it out. I'll figure it out.
Tell me when those firefighters get out of pants.
Do the teammates perform or other people there perform? Just yourself?
So, the great thing about this is there are five, six innings of softball. In between each inning, there are minute-to-win-it type, type games that happen. Shenan, shenanigans is a great way of putting it. We had a mascot relay race that happened. Ton of fun. We had a donut eating competition. Lot of fun. We're going to throw in some, uh, some more antics as well and get the crowd involved. And again, it is, uh, to raise funds for Memorial, or excuse me, for Mill Stadium at Memorial Park. So that is a, a fantastic event that will, this will be the second annual. And we'll see if the police can't hold it off. Uh, you know, uh, Tim, uh, Polief, or, uh, excuse me, Fire Chief? The challenge is out there. It, it, it was spicy last year.
Mr. Mayor, who won the donut eating contest?
Oddly enough, the police. They had an advantage. They had an advantage.
It was a clean sweep on the season.
It was a clean sweep. Uh, anyways, again, Thursday, July 24th, please join us. It'll be a lot of fun. End of report.
Oh, finally.
Sorry. What fun this is right now.
I, uh, I think everything I wanted to speak about was pretty much spoken for. Uh, except for, I want to remind the council that in one week, we do have that priority-setting meeting. So please put some time and effort in this week. Maybe, maybe even write some things down on a piece of paper. Show up to next meeting so we're, we're prepared for that. Um, but, uh, other than that, we have a couple of closed sessions we need to adjourn to. One is a, per Minnesota State Statute 13D.03 subdivision 3C.3 to consider offers for the annex. And another closed session that I don't want to read the entire thing for some unit negotiations.
Read the, read the state code.
I think you have to read it.
Oh, okay. So the statute 13D.05 subdivision 3B, subject to be discussed pursuant to Minnesota statutes 13D.01 subdivision 3. And legal positions and strategy and the interest arbitration. The City and Teamsters Local Union Number 346, BMS Case Number 25PN0773.
Second.
Could you repeat the part about, uh?
Motion by Chezak, second by Johnson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against, same sign.
Should we take seven?
Yeah. Uh, yeah, seven minutes.